Offers of support and assistance to RV inhabitants with notification of applicable parking ordinances and a reasonable timeframe to comply, written housing, homelessness, and other applicable resources. And during the initial period of outreach, RV inhabitants should also be provided with outreach by a homeless services provider, including housing problem-solving assistance, possible funding for RV repair, referrals to additional housing and homeless resources, health, mental health, or addiction services, or other appropriate services. RVs and/or conditions adjacent to RVs creating health and safety concerns would be subject to immediate enforcement. City Council took action at its March 12 meeting to allocate an initial amount of $50,000 from one-time state housing emergency aid program funds to provide outreach to RVs. Additional resources may be added as part of the fiscal year 2021 budget process. Refer to the city manager expedited creation of a special three-month permit program with possibility of renewal to be offered on a one-time basis to existing priority populations. The three-month priority permit should be operative no more than six months from adoption of this ordinance and consider the following. Criteria for eligibility should be clearly articulated and fairly applied. The Alameda County Homeless Coordinated Entry System has standards already in place with criteria such as health status, disability, and self-care needs, age, and household size, including the presence of children. The permit should be available during an application window of one to two months and issued for up to three months with an option to renew under limited/specified circumstances. Because the three-month permit process will be available for a limited time, the application and processing can be simplified. Staff should quickly identify, secure, and prepare temporary locations for priority permit holders to stay, including on public or private property, and establish appropriate sanitary facilities and other necessary protocols and/or facilities to support RVs with priority permits. If necessary, a lottery or a standardized system to prioritize applications may be established to allocate limited spaces in an equitable manner. No fee shall be required as the three-month permit program will be offered on a one-time basis only to offer more intensive housing navigation and services to priority populations currently in Berkeley. And finally, refer to the Health, Life Enrichment Equity and Community Policy Committee to establish basic criteria for a permanent standard two-week permitting process. The standard two-week permit should consider the following: a limited number of permits to be issued by the city per month or other increment, locations to be geographically dispersed among all council districts, a reasonable fee to cover city costs associated with the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's the revised supplemental item that the council just accepted for consideration this evening. With that, we'll start public comment. Mr. Martino, do you like to start? Mr. Kurzweil, do you want to start public comment?
Do I get the 30 seconds that you lopped off my last talk?
You get one minute.
One minute.
Yeah.
I'm Jack Kurzweil representing the Wellstone Democratic Renewal Club. This substitute proposal is absolutely wrong-headed. It turns the problem on its head. Instead of making for long-term RV spaces for appropriate residents of the city of Berkeley, it is substituting a short-term, one-time-only palliative. It is, I think, a mask for a grotesque effort to rid Berkeley of people who are living in RVs. It should be rejected, and I think that the council should make it its business to find long-term RV spaces for people who meet appropriate sets of conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
First of all, I want to apologize for my behavior, especially to council member Wengraff. I do apologize. First thing I want to say is, I believe that attaching a supplemental to this renders this to be a first reading. That's up for the lawyers to decide. I hope they decide that my assessment is correct and sue the hell out of you for violation of the Brown Act. The thing of it is, what I came up here to say was, in the next council meeting, we'll be considering a proposal that has been sponsored by council members Davila, Robinson, and Harrison, with a supplement by council member Bartlett. These are reasonable proposals. I believe that this item tonight should be tabled. I get it, there's a problem west Berkeley. Business owners are upset, residents are upset, but can we please just step back for two weeks and at least listen to a reasonable option instead of beating people over the head again with a stick? Because at the end of the day, you are not going to be able to enforce this ordinance.
Thank you.
Illegal behavior on employers' campuses.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? So whoever would like to speak, please come forward so we can go through public comment.
My name is Mariah. I live and work in west Berkeley. The survey that the city did of surrounding neighborhoods to find out what other cities were doing, I don't care what other cities are doing to address or let's say not address homelessness. I don't live in those cities. I live in Berkeley, and Berkeley can do better. There should be absolutely no displacement until there is a plan that is created and implemented and includes everyone in place. This item is too important to rush it through. It should indeed be tabled. Why not take a little more time and caution and consideration when people's lives are literally at stake? Zillow.com put the median home price for renting an apartment in Berkeley at over $3,500. Huffington Post reported recently that, from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, that homelessness in the United States grew for the first time last year since the Great Depression. DreamsForChange.org, an organization doing actual good, has said that the loss of a vehicle is seen as one of the final steps to chronic homelessness. Would you care about these people then if they were actually homeless?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
First, I'd like to move that we stop using this term "RV inhabitants" and start using the term "human beings," because that's what we are out here. I haven't talked to the city council since 2012. Back then, you guys were trying to pass a no-sit-no-lie ordinance against the homeless, and we fought and we beat that. We'll fight and beat this one too, and if we don't, we'll still live in our RVs, sleep on our streets when we want to, because we have nowhere else to go. You people just don't learn.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
So, hello, okay. So I live in a minivan. Most of you guys would probably not even notice me if I was sleeping in your block. And the reason I chose the minivan was to be invisible. People in RVs don't have that choice. And also, my choice to be invisible as a working adult in this city included giving up being able to stand in my home, giving up having bathroom facilities in my own home just so I could be invisible and not be harassed. Like, these people just want to have homes where they can stand. I would like to have a home I could stand up in. But I ran into a roommate situation that was untenable. I moved into my car, and then my next step up from that was moving into a van, and I'm too scared to get anything bigger, because it was easier to get a car. I could actually afford a car payment. I can't afford a rent payment in Berkeley, but I can afford a car. So I got a car, now I have a van, and I work every day in the city. The last six weeks, I was working at Berkeley Wrap, and I just want to have a place to sleep at night. That's all I have to say.
Alejandro Sotaville Hill, you know who I am. Sophie, I'd like for you to stay since you wrote the amendment. Thank you. As an elected official, I'd like a little bit more time than one minute. First of all, if you saw Assemblymember Chu from San Francisco recently propose an item to prohibit the towing of vehicles for indigent folks when they get tickets. And I see that this item is moving in that direction opposite of what Assemblymember Chu is trying to do. Second of all, procedurally, if you had those 70 copies, they should have been right here. They should have been over there, so people understand how to think, how to discuss this issue prior to being in line. If you look at this line, it tells you a lot. Moreover, it also tells you a lot that this most recent election, folks wanted to have positive solutions to homelessness and willing to tax themselves. This right here is so assed backwards and unbelievable and sad. It is so sad. Thank you. It is so sad, Sophie, and Jesse, and everyone else who voted for it last election or last reading. It really is. If we were the old council, they would have already just ran it through. And this council wants to craft it in a unique way to make it seem like it's palatable, but when in fact, it's the same oppressive, harassive, and criminalizing language that all of us hear, not only at this council meeting, but the voters opposed. Why do you think you got in office originally? And if you pass this, I have to go get my kids. If you pass this, I'm gonna have to go tell my kids, yeah, well, you know, a couple council members who are at the dais voted to criminalize homelessness and use your picture in their campaign literature so they can lie to the elected populace, the electorate, in order to get in...
Thank you.
No, 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 hold up.
Okay, another minute, yield it to the speaker.
To get in office and do the same thing that Tom Bates did, Linda Mayo did, Susan Wengraff did, Lori Droste. It's the same old show, but different faces. We worked hard to get you here. Extremely hard, you know that. And so, you know, I feel sad for your soul if you continue this vote. And so, you know, you can smirk all you want, but your time is up, and I can't wait to get new people in there that perhaps will actually do what they said to the voters. Thank you, bye.
I am a resident in South Berkeley District 3, so council member Bartlett, we are looking at your vote. I am a renter, and I know that many of my neighbors and myself are constantly worried about evictions, and I hate seeing my neighbors of color being evicted and leaving the neighborhood and then having upper-class, mostly white families moving in. That is really not okay. So we'll be watching your vote and we want to know if we can have your back in the future. I want to ask city council if you have asked the city attorney what their opinion is on whether this ordinance would stand in court. On September 4th of last year, the 9th district court ruled that in Martin versus the City of Boys, and I quote, "The panel held that as long as there is no option to sleep indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise that they had no choice in the matter." So it is my understanding that the ordinance as it is now... It is my understanding that this would not stand in court. So I want to make sure that you share with the public what the city attorney thinks, and if they think that it's not going to pass, and I think that's what's going to happen, I just want to remind you that you're wasting our tax dollars, and you should be putting the money that would go to attorney's fees to actually solving this problem. And honestly, who of you all think you're going to be popular if you pass this ordinance in this political climate? For real. Like, I know that you have to ask for donations from people that have money, but it is the people that vote, not the people that have money. There is a problem, yes, but there are multiple ways to solve the issue, and just going to court and having this very expensive little petty victory for Nimbus is not the way to do it. Thank you.
Would anybody yield me a few extra minutes?
One, two, you have three minutes. Three minutes, three more minutes, four minutes. He has four minutes.
Thank you.
He has four minutes, he's kind of four hands.
All right. Just over a year ago, I was living in a nice house with my partner of eight years and working a comfortable six-figure tech job. Life changed when the startup I was working for ran out of money and I got laid off. Two weeks later, my partner dumped me, forcing me and my dog Bandit to move out. I found an affordable room through Craigslist sharing an apartment with three other people. Things were going great for about a week until the landlord showed up and told us that the master tenant, whom I just paid a rather large security deposit to, hadn't paid him any rent for the last six months when we were being evicted. Turns out, the master tenant was stealing our rent money to fuel his meth addiction. Later that night, after confronting the master tenant about the eviction, he turned violent. I rushed to rent a U-Haul, packed as quickly as I could, and got out of there. I was now jobless, homeless, and running out of money. I continued to look for housing, which is already scarce and almost impossible to secure without a job. I bounced between Airbnb's, friends' couches, and when things started to get dire, a campsite at Lake Chabot. This is the cycle of homelessness that traps many of us. It was hard for me to get a job when most of my energy was focused on where I was going to sleep that night, and hard for me to find housing without a job. To keep myself afloat, I used the last of my savings to buy an RV, a 1992 Ford Silver Eagle. If you've never been inside an RV before, you'd be surprised how comfortable it is. I have a sink with running water, a stove with an oven, a fridge, a shower with hot water, and a toilet that flushes. It's not much different from one of those tiny studio apartments in Manhattan and has provided me with the stability to land another job, which is going well. My neighbors, who I met when I started parking at the Berkeley Marina last summer, are some of the most wonderful people you'll ever meet. There are Cal students, retail workers, nonprofit employees, and delivery drivers, all driven out of traditional housing by skyrocketing rents. We've formed a loving, supportive community, sharing meals, and helping each other navigate this precarious situation none of us thought we'd ever be in. If the RV ban passes, I'll be fine. After a brief period with my bank account dangerously close to zero, I'm building up my savings with my new job so I can afford the deposit on an apartment, and this chapter in my life will soon be over. My neighbors won't be fine. Most of them haven't had the upper-middle-class upbringing and engineering degree that has become a prerequisite for affording Berkeley rents. They'll be forced to scramble to find a new place to park. If their RVs get towed in the process, they'll likely find themselves joining the growing tent cities under freeway overpasses. To be completely honest, a year ago, I would have supported the RV ban. Living in a comfortable house with a stable job, it was hard to feel anything but annoyed at unsightly RVs parked in front of coffee shops and breweries inhabited by scary unknown people who to my imagination made out to be needle drug users and car window smashers. Needless to say, my perspective has changed. Living in an RV has given me the stability and safety I've needed to get through an incredibly difficult period in my life and come out the other side no worse for the wear. While I've occupied a parking space never intended to be lived on, it's enabled me to support myself well enough that I've never needed to draw on social services very costly to the city, like shelters and health clinics. I'll share an excerpt from a letter from council members Cheryl Devilla, Kate Harrison, and Roger Robinson directed to Mayor Jesse Aggrin and council members Rashi Kasrawani, Ben Bartlett, Sophie Hahn, Sue Wengraff, and Lori Droste. "Vehicle dwellers reflect the same diversity of our housed community and deserve to be treated with equal care and respect. Vehicle dwellers, Kate Tactus, in Berkeley, visit our restaurants, theaters, businesses, and contribute to our economy." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Expecting to get only one minute, I have written my comments, but of course, I have to now edit them as I read along because you came out with a revision in the mid-part of this meeting. That's totally unacceptable, but I'll go ahead anyway and see if I can deal with it. The permitting process that you voted for on September 28th and also coming in this revision is draconian, bureaucratically grotesque, and inhumane, and as well as the amended code 14.40.120 that you voted on on that night, which it was stated that the RV... Well, the permitting process is grotesque because it stated the RVs would be permitted to park, and now it's for three months instead of 14 days in a calendar year. That's a totally temporary, if you can even call it a solution. And what I'd like to know is, what's going to happen with those people who have permits during the 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM time that they're supposed to drive out? That is in your ordinance that you call the first reading. Just as I say, it's totally crazy, and it would be laughable if it didn't cause so much suffering to the people that are going to be affected.
Thank you. Ms. Bernardi, unless somebody wants to yield you a minute, your time is up. Okay, so that individual yielded a minute.
Did somebody give me one?
Yes.
Okay. Allowing RVs and campers to park on the marina, why don't you do that and provide porta-potties, trash pickup, and sewage pump out for the RVs that have plumbing? The state should allow this. We have a statewide, nationwide housing crisis. To bring up this tidelands law, I bet you had to dig it up, is really... I'm sure you could have that changed, because what about all those cars that used to park for the restaurants? What about the restaurants that are there? Aren't they affecting the tidelands? I don't see that if you provide the facilities that are needed, that the RVs and campers would be any worse than the restaurants and all that other parking that took place. Thank you.
Would anyone be willing to yield me a minute?
Minute, please. We have two, three minutes.
Thank you, everyone present here today. Thank you, city council, for hearing us speak at this time. And so, I really just want to say first and foremost that if the city council didn't vote to push people out of the Berkeley Marina, we wouldn't be here right now. We wouldn't be having to argue just for having a safe sanctuary for people to stay. For example, there's a nice parking lot right outside of this city council hall. Are you going to propose that maybe the marina, the RV folks can actually stay there? And in this item, we're discussing various constraints. For example, who is enforcing these policies? Well, obviously, Berkeley police officers are going to be the ones on the ground to enforce these policies. And from my discussions with the campers on 8th and Harrison Street, it seems like the Berkeley Police is actually going into people's RVs, pushing them out with guns held, and I see that as a legal search and seizure or illegal entry. And we need to really think about how are we serving the people here by pushing them out of their RVs with armed guns? Likewise, we're talking about enforcing and revising RV parking, but this is at 2:00 to 5:00 AM. Now, 4 o'clock is roughly where most people have their REM sleep cycles. Are you going to make sure that people have adequate places to sleep in the daytime? Likewise, what's a reasonable amount of time for someone who's living out of their car? Let's be honest here, what is reasonable to get someone outside of their vehicles and try to find housing? I've been trying to find housing in this city for two months for various... I'm sorry, two years for various reasons. It's not easy, and I know that there's many items coming up on the table talking about low-income housing, but why aren't you thinking about, is that going to push my community members as a representative out of my district? Are people going to go to Emeryville or Oakland? They're Berkeley residents, and it doesn't even matter if they're Berkeley residents. They're human beings. And you really need to think about, well, if we're in a city with a sanctuary city policy, how is pushing human beings out sanctuary at all? And so, the reality is, is this one-time permit that this city council is trying to bring about, it's cruel, it's inhumane. It's saying that just because you're down on your luck or just because you didn't get adequate housing that we provided for you, or even worse, the private sector provided for you, and we know the rents are $4,000 right here in Berkeley. It's saying that you don't have a right to exist, and that is surely enough for you to not adopt this item right now.
Amen.
And so, like, yes, I agree with, there needs to be homeless resources. Yes, I agree, there needs to be health and mental health resources, but you're not doing that for the city at large. You're doing that because we're putting the pressure on you, and you need to start thinking, where are the sanitation plans for everyone in the city, not just people that are living in RVs? Because I live in District 7, and there's no way that people can get adequate access to sanitation other than people's park, which we will defend. And so, I just really want to say very quickly, this is cruel and inhumane. Berkeley residents deserve better, and if that means that they live in their RVs, they should be able to live in their RVs, because they're humans, just like you.
Thank you.
All right. RV dwellers are not bad people. We just can't afford to live in the most expensive housing market in the country. So instead of complaining, we have taken it upon ourselves to find a solution that works for us. A lot of us are hard-working people with jobs that actively contribute to society here in Berkeley. So it's completely wrong to penalize us just because we can't afford the cost of rent here. I'm fully self-contained and generate all my own electricity through noiseless solar. I've demonstrated that I'm a good neighbor and always keep my RV and land around it clean. If you want to penalize me for not keeping the area around my RV clean and thus becoming an eyesore, then do that, but don't penalize me just for existing and treat me like I'm some sort of dirty second-class citizen that needs to be run out of town just because of my housing solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Diven. I live in the 2nd district. I live at 5th and Channing. I'm a homeowner. I am a litigator. I'm a lot of things, I'm a mom. And I didn't know, the first time this came out, I had no idea about it, or I would have been here. A lot of us would have been here, I think. We live with our RV neighbors as thick as thieves, and my son has friends that live in RVs. I have friends that live in RVs. I have never feared for my safety. I have never seen refuse on the ground. Like, my neighborhood historically is mixed. There's industrial, there's people living in RVs, there's people living in houses, and we all live together very peacefully. And I think that there's a lot of talk about safety and dirtiness and all of these fears that are not real. And so, can I have a minute from someone?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. I don't want you to adopt this new ordinance. It's a Band-Aid. I appreciate the effort that went into writing it, but giving people more flyers about resources that are already full is cruel. Give people information about sites that don't exist. The RV site that opened in Oakland filled up that fast, gone. So, like, I want you to reach to the people that you're trying to serve here and serve them. Serve them. Like, this tries to serve, I don't know who, business owners, who are upset about parking. But the homeowners in the neighborhood, I can tell you, up and down the street in my neighborhood in Districts 1 and 2, where everybody, for the most part, lives, we're grateful. We're grateful, so thank you.
Hello, my name is Kent Doe, and I'm a Parkinson sufferer. Bear with me just a moment. This is to the mayor. Mayor, we met about a year ago at Oquartet Park, and you stood in that little home I was staying in. He told me it was legal because it had wheels. So when we got kicked out of Oquartet Park, I moved that vehicle, which is legally registered, over to here there. It lasted two months there before one person complained. One person complained, as far as I was told. One person complained, and I had to move out of that comfortable home. It was just a little mini-home, but it was comfortable, and it served my needs for Parkinson's disease and scoliosis, and now I'm staying in a cold, wet, damp tent here there because of the parking ordinance, and I don't think that's fair. I'd say there should be more effort done for sick and unable people.
Has your vehicle gotten towed?
Sir, I believe Councilor Davila has a question for you.
Do you still have your vehicle, or has it been towed?
No, it hasn't been towed. We had to move it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Will somebody give her a minute?
I open my van.
She needs one more minute, please.
Okay. There's a woman in the back.
There's a woman in the back, I see her.
So I live in Berkeley, I haven't lived here for very long, but I've been living in my van for most of the last year. I found a house. I'm not going to have enough money for it very soon, so I'm going to be moving out probably in a few months and going back into my van. To me, RVs are pretty high-class, but I'm in solidarity with the RV dwellers, because they have a bathroom. Another woman who lived in a van, everything she said, I totally corroborate, it sucks, you can't stand up, and you're low-key, but you have to be. This plan is so insulting. This is a slap in the face or a spit, I don't even know what kind of joke this is, but it's laughably bad. It's just divide and conquer, and we all know what it's for. Everybody in this new room knows what this proposal is for, it's to get rid of van and RV dwellers. So let's not joke about that. Yes, the thing about outreach is a joke, if you, we don't need like a flyer, you just need to be left alone. If you want a solution to concentration or this potential mess that is being cited, that I don't really know who's having these complaints, just take the laws off the books. Don't have restrictions on where you can park an RV. If you're going to corner a bunch of people, put a bunch of people in a corner and say, "Why are you all gathered in that corner?" Well, maybe let them out of the corner. How about that? So, you know, and when I moved here, I saw all these signs that say, "Refugees welcome here." No hate in Berkeley. Well, we're economic refugees, okay? That's, if people come here from other countries and they can't afford to live, are refugees still welcome here? And like, this kind of hate for poor people, this is white supremacy, one. Regardless of who you see in this room, on either side, the racialized nature of homelessness in this country and in the world means that any anti-homeless legislation is anti-black, it's anti-POC. And, yeah, when the discomfort in seeing poor people exceeds, or even in any way matches the experience of poverty and relevance, this is eugenic, this is Trumpian shit. So think about which side y'all are on.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Topher Brennan, I'm a Berkeley parent in District 3, and I was at the first meeting on this issue, and I saw people get up and speak in favor of the RV ban. And what I noticed is that the main argument for the RV ban seemed to be, we need to protect our parking spaces. I even heard one person say, "We've got a right to parking." Well, I think the right to housing should supersede the right to parking. And people talked about protecting Berkeley's commons, but what they were really asking for is kicking certain people out of the commons so that other people could use it more. And, you know, I heard these business owners say, get up and say, "You need to do this RV ban, because we want it, and we're job creators, so you need to do what we say." But Berkeley doesn't have a job shortage, we have a housing shortage. Thank you.
I'm a student at your university here, and I also live in my bus. And I guess I just thought I should come and share my feelings. Now I'm like, what are they? But basically, like, I live in Berkeley sometimes, and often we do get made feel unwelcome, we get little notes put on our windshields from the police, and told to move on, and what was that? Oh, yeah, this is what it was. You know, you talk about this affordable housing and how you're going to provide housing for people, but we've provided housing for ourselves. Like, we did it. And so there's a reason we don't trust you guys to do that for us, because we ended up having to just do it for ourselves. And you're going to take it away, and then we're going to live in a tent, and then we're going to die. Like, that's what happens, that is the progression. And if you want to kill us, then, okay, we'll die, but like, we're also not going to go away. The problem's not going to go, we're always going to be here, and you really can't get rid of us.
Hello. Wow. I'm Jason Wilson, and I'm with U-Spirit Artworks, and I'm just here to ask, what's the point? Like, I don't understand the point of banning people from parking on streets with RVs between 2:00 and 5:00 AM. Like, think about it, if you had an RV, would you want, like, if you were to be banned from parking somewhere, why would you be banned from parking somewhere at 2:00 and 5:00 AM? What are they going to do at 2:00, between the time of 2:00 and 5:00 AM? Like, I just don't understand. Like, if people are, if people are like, I would get it if people were like committing crimes at that time, but like, if you ask any of these people who own an RV, they're going to be asleep. They're not really going to be disturbing anybody else. And anybody else who has a home and doesn't want an RV parked in front of their own home, they should be asleep too. It's 2:00 AM, what are you doing?
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. So, young man, do you want to continue public comment? Sir?
Hello, I'm Zaire, I'm also from U-Spirit Artworks. I just wanted to say that I want you guys to analyze everyone's situation, and basically, put yourself in their shoes. How would you feel if you worked, if you put your blood, sweat, and tears in something that you love, and something that's a necessity to you, and somebody came over there and told you when and when you cannot use it? Or if somebody just came in there and took it away from you? How would you feel? This is how these people feel right now. And I would just want to say, as one of my best friends said, yeah, what are people going to do at 2:00 and 5:00 AM? It's nowhere, it's just, basically, people are going to be sleeping at the time. And my last thing is, I just want you guys to just have a heart.
Hi, my name is Jennifer. I was born and raised in Berkeley and have raised my children here. I am gratefully clinging to my rent-controlled flat, and sometimes when I get nervous, I look at my car and think, well, yeah, we could all squeeze in here. I live in District 2, we have many RVs down the street. I have never seen problems, I have never heard any of my neighbors complain about them. I walk in Aquatic Park, I walk in the marina, I used to see the really nice community that was there in the marina near the Doubletree. And they had flowers, there were families, they had a real community, they talked to each other, helped each other out, and they were removed and parking was made. In Aquatic Park, I've walked and seen hillsides strewn with toilet paper. That means there was no place for those people to go to the bathroom. I, um, thank you. I wrote to the mayor's office that day and said, couldn't porta-potties with wash stations be put in here? Because I think we're on the brink of a public health crisis, and what about the dignity of these people? Someone wrote to me within an hour and said, hey, we're going to get right on that. What a good idea. Nothing, right? Okay. Thank you.
My name is Boris, I'm a business owner in West Berkeley, I also live there. I think I'm the person you're trying to protect from something? I think a couple of things. First of all, the people who have RVs are some of the most resourceful, amazing people. They have found a solution with their wiles, with their wits. I don't feel any fear from them at all, nobody in my neighborhood feels anything from them. I feel much safer walking down the street at 2:00 in the morning in West Berkeley, an industrial neighborhood, when I see these people. And I think that if we have a problem, if the owner of Tomat Cafe has a problem with an RV, they can give you a call, they can remove that specific person or that specific vehicle. But I think in general, you're taking the easy way out, and you're taking it out on people who have found the solution, which you haven't. That's one thing. The second thing I want to say, as a startup founder, as a person who is responsible partially for the rising housing prices here, I want to say, this isn't the kind of city I want to create my company in. Can I have a minute?
Woman in the back, thank you.
We are here not because of cookie cutter developments that you guys want to put out, we're here because this is a cool, creative, awesome city to be in, that's filled with all kinds of people, especially people who are so together. None of you could actually live in an RV, actually. Not for the first three months. You couldn't figure it out, okay? So these people are amazing, they're creative, they're resourceful, and they're great. Thank you very much.
Let RVs stay good night.
Ma'am, please, please, please don't disrupt the council meeting. Let speakers speak. Please. Please, everyone, please, let's have some order. Let's let the speaker speak. Ma'am, please.
Wow, it's like the Super Bowl of hyperbole here tonight. I have a different view. And it seems like, I hope there's some other people in the line that share my view, but I'm a middle-aged, white, working-class property owner. And unfortunately, our experience with the RVs in West Berkeley, Fifth and Dwight, has not been the beautiful experience that I hear described here. It's definitely a concern to our neighborhood. My main point to you tonight is, I agree that this isn't the solution. This is a serious problem for our community, we've got to find a solution, but the solution is not allowing people to park wherever they want, whenever they want. I also mentioned that what funds all of this, including the great plans to solve this problem, is taxes from people like me. And I would like to feel, please, I would like to feel that we have an equal voice to the rest of the people in this room.
So, please, ladies and gentlemen, let's be respectful of everyone's opinion, even if we don't agree with each other. This man has a perspective that he has a right to share. I'm going to give you 30 more seconds.
I'd like to ask for another minute.
I'll give you another minute.
How about it? Yes, ma'am?
Please, ma'am, ma'am, could you please sit down?
Yes.
You're intimidating the speaker, you're intimidating the speaker. Please, ma'am, please sit down. You're not speaking at this time, please. Ma'am. So I'm going to give the speaker another minute. Sir, would you like to take another minute?
Yes, I would. I won't take a whole minute, I think I can do it in 30 seconds. So what I'd like to say to you is, this is a serious problem, and it's hurting our city, and I agree with that. And you on the council have got to solve it. But it's got to also account for the rights of the people that do own property, we're not bad people, we work for a living as well, and we pay taxes. One of the main problems with the situations we have is, yes, other people pay taxes, but they don't pay property taxes. You know, and it really makes, well, that's all I have to say. I think you guys have got a serious problem, and you've got a responsibility to solve it. I've spoken with my council member Cheryl, and challenged her very hard. You guys need to solve this problem. Letting people park whenever they want, wherever they want, is not the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. So, ladies and gentlemen, please, if we can please, if we can please let the speaker speak and not interrupt them, just like, when you have your time to speak, you don't want to be interrupted. Let's respect each other and let everyone have an opportunity to speak. So, ma'am.
My name is Patty Woody. I am a small business owner on 4th Street here in Berkeley. Been in business 47 years. In the past seven or eight years, we have a very bad crime problem on 4th Street in Berkeley. It's a constant issue of car break-ins, snatch and grab, grab and run in all the stores. It's a rush of crime on 4th Street. It's really affecting my business and every business on 4th Street.
Sir, please.
It doesn't particularly have anything to do with RVs, except that we have a tremendous homeless encampment under the freeway and in tents. And in the evenings, there is a lot of crime. And I know a lot of the tax base here in Berkeley comes from the shops on 4th Street, and we are suffering from the crime.
Please, let's not interrupt the speaker. Ma'am, please, let's not interrupt. Ma'am, you want, please stop, please, let's not interrupt the speakers. Let's let everyone have an opportunity to speak. You have an opportunity to speak, please get in line. Let's let this woman have an opportunity to express her opinion, as she has a right to do. Ma'am, please continue.
My business is really suffering from all the crime in the 4th Street area, and I don't think it's an area to have an RV encampment. That perhaps the marina, or the idea of letting people live in the boats, that's some creative thinking, but 4th Street is a business district, and for us to generate the money we generate that largely goes to your tax base here in Berkeley, we need to have our customers feel safe. They don't feel safe. On a regular basis, I have people say to me, "I will never come here again. My car was broken into, or I was panhandled all the way here." They come into our shop. I'm just saying, this is a situation on 4th Street in Berkeley. All the merchants there are affected, and we're feeling that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you for coming and for your courage to speak. And ladies and gentlemen, please, let's let every person have the opportunity to be heard, regardless of their opinion. We are here to listen, let's not interrupt the speakers, please. Next speaker, please.
You're used to me representing an organization. I'm not here representing any organization today. But I am a middle-class, white, middle-aged, actually working-class resident of West Berkeley. And by just the grace of when I was born and when I came to Berkeley, just blind luck, I am housed now. Thousands and thousands of people aren't housed now. It's a difficult problem, but I think Berkeley can take a better approach, a less punitive and more compassionate approach to this issue than what's presently before the council. I live on a street in West Berkeley, and for decades, we've had RVs and vans living on the street. It's actually worked, because if somebody's there too long, the neighbor goes out and knocks on the door and say, "Hey, you know, you've been here a couple months, maybe there's another place to go." And they usually go. If the person's really recalcitrant, could, somebody give me a minute?
Yes.
Okay. If the person's really, you know, recalcitrant, you can always call the police, and it gets red-tagged in three days, and they're out there. And that has happened also. So it seems like, I'm not exactly sure, really exactly what the problem is. On another, pardon, the other issue for me is that I built a tiny home on the back of my truck in 1978. I use it for my work as a nature photographer. It's been parked in front of my house for 35 years. Now, it's illegal. Something's really wrong with that. If it was still the pickup truck, it'd be okay, but because I built a little home on the back of it, now they're going to come and ticket it and tow it away, so I hope you address that issue. On the 4th Street issue, I believe it is a special situation, this is just my personal feeling. You know, the retail, there's not much parking, they need parking, and you could draw like a little overlay around that to say, okay, not parking within a block of the 4th Street area. And I'm not speaking for the organization, but as somebody, you know, who does work with companies in West Berkeley all the time, I just want to say, anecdotally, not one company has called me.
Thank you, Rick.
And said, "I got to get these people off of my block."
Thank you.
Last time I was at a city council meeting, I went storming out the door and slammed it so hard, a few people probably still remember what it felt like. There's a couple of new council members up here, Rashi, you're mine, we'll talk someday. And I'd like to say several things about this. First of all, about a year ago, we were here talking about, do not make the RVs move, do not make the RVs move. And as I'm reading through this, I can't help but remember that time, when we talked about, we will adequately find temporary solutions for this problem. And I didn't ever see anybody up here finding any temporary solutions. Just like when I was battling to keep the 9th Street shelter open. I heard there would be a lot of work done to find an adequate place for those 95 people that were going to be put back out on the street, many of them disabled and elderly. A woman has died since then. I got one back in the corner, and I'm sure I got more. And one of those women has died recently in that shelter. We reduced the numbers to half of what we had in that shelter, and they still ended up where I would have bet my house. They were going to end up in the basement of the vet building, which is not an appropriate place, is not 24/7. The company that you were so worried about taking over the 9th Street shelter, still isn't in there feeding 20,000 people. I had to make food for Mama because she had none. There's no place to get food. At least in an RV, you have a place to store food. At least in an RV, you have a place to store food. A couple of other things I'd like to point out. I am a white, not, I'm beyond middle-aged, I'm a senior at this point. Working, I try to work as hard as I can, but I do it as I choose. And I own property here, and I pay taxes, and I don't mind paying those taxes if they're being used for the right thing. I mind paying those taxes when they're being reused for nonsense, and most of the money is being used for nonsense. I also want to know, when does one become a Berkeley resident? When they come in here with money and they can pay for an apartment? Or after they've been here, living on the streets for years? I consider those people way more Berkeley residents than those that come in here with a pocket full of cash. I think that this whole situation needs a lot more work. To not give this consideration and time to make it right is just throwing another Band-Aid on a gash. There's way too much, lot of maybes and possibilities of, and under limited, and, and circumstances. You know, people that are concerned about trash piling up, what about having trash collection? I know encampments that neatly bag their stuff, and nobody comes to pick it up. Look at any of those places that are along the freeway down there, and nobody ever picks up the trash. It's always volunteers that go down there and take the trash to the dumpsters, or to the dump, rather. We've got to think outside the box. You people are stuck and stupid. You're still stuck and stupid. I would have loved it if you had woken up a little bit, but if we're going to be writing these proposals and expect them to be passed and expect a three-month permit to solve this situation, you're just as inhuman and non-thinking and non-caring as you've been for far too long.
So, before Mr. Regan speaks, I just want to remind the public, please, let's be respectful of each other. Please, be civil to the council, to the staff, to each other. I know this is an issue important to our community. Let's, let's, let's have a civil and open dialogue tonight. So, next speaker, please.
Good evening, city council members and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your input on this important situation that we're facing with RVs. It's RVs to be or not to be. And I think that we need to look at this more seriously than what's been on, on the dais so far. We have Cheryl, and we have Sophia that drafted a new thing for April the second, I believe, and I think we should put a moratorium on this meeting tonight. Just look at all the people that have shown up to express their views on this situation. Let's move it on to the next meeting. Call this an adjournment and listen to everybody else that has something to say. Thank you.
The issues that we're trying to resolve here are not being correctly resolved. There's pre-existing problems which are preventing them from being resolved. If someone's committing a crime, there's existing laws that the police could act on. One problem that we're having here in Berkeley is the police. I was down at the aquatic park camp, the elder group, and we had people coming into camp and attacking the elders. When the police were called, they told us we could not throw them out. They brought people into our camp that caused trouble, made trash, and nobody blinked an eye. I tried to write you about that, but the never, the email was never received. I don't know who's screening your emails. But I did try to contact about you about that, because I know that you were down at that camp, standing in Kinst's trailer, is a tiny home, which is a housing solution, which the camp was there to advocate for. Houses on wheels. My sign here? Mobile homes, house trailers. These are housing solutions. If you remove people's houses, they will be homeless. Then you will see trouble. I could go on for quite a while. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Maldonado, resident of Berkeley. I'd like to cede my time to Margie Wilkinson.
Thank you. First of all, I don't know why I'm surprised. It's happened so many times, where we come to the council to talk about an issue, and we thought we knew what the issue was, and when we get to the meeting, new language has sprung on us. We've had no time to think about it or deal with it. You know, it happens over and over again, and it's really a perversion of democracy. And I urge you to stop it. You have, if you're going to change things, you have to make it public a few days ahead of time so that the rest of us can figure it out. It's just obscene. You know, the, the new language that came in tonight is not really new. It's the same old, same old, and the services are to grease the skids for the expulsion of the, of the people who live in their vehicles. And it, it, it has such a bad feel about it. I don't even know what you all are thinking about. But I, I want to say, you know, I know about two letters that you received. You received a letter from Mary Bem Steinberg, a very good, thoughtful letter with real suggestions. I urge you to read it. Don't vote on this tonight. Think about what you're doing. And more importantly, you received a letter from Rebecca Kaplan, who is the president of the Oakland City Council, which says, citing RVs and making them move from location to location has not resulted in a decrease in the number of homeless, of individuals who are homeless. In fact, it can exacerbate a situation by creating debt and instability for families and individuals who have already experienced displacement. I ask you to pause on this vote and instead identify adequate alternative locations for RVs. I extend my hand to work with you to jointly expand safe, effective, allowed RV locations. Reject this measure tonight. Postpone it. Do whatever you have to do to take her up on that offer. Thank you.
I'll just say for the record that we have pleaded with Oakland to work with us to find locations so we can house people, and they did not support our request. I'm glad that Councilor Kaplan has indicated a willingness to collaborate and work regionally. We have to work regionally to address this issue, because, and so we're, I'm very pleased that, that she now wants to work with the city of Berkeley to address this, but we did reach out to Oakland, and they did not want to work with us to, to provide a location for recreational vehicles.
May I say something?
We did, yes. I was, I, I spoke to Councilor Kaplan this morning.
May I say something?
Hi.
Margie?
Yeah, I just wanted to let Margie know that my office has, holds a regional RV parking solution meeting, and Rebecca Kaplan's office has been represented. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, council. I just wanted to state my name. My name's Nagim Mosad, and I am a homeowner in District Five, and I'm a business owner in District Four. And I do pay my taxes, and I want my taxes to be used to help resolve some of these issues in a, in a realistic and humanistic way. Seventy-five percent of the world's wealth today is being housed in real estate for reasons of basically shelving the one percent's money somewhere. We have fifty-four thousand homeless people in LA. We have sixteen thousand homeless people in San Francisco. The, the governor is trying to call a state of emergency for this, this crisis right now. What we're doing here with this RV situation is creating more homeless crisis. If this thing passes, I'm going to have to go tell my son in high school that, "I'm sorry, your friend who was sleeping in his car with his family, who got evicted from their house, is now going to have to move and find another place to go to school." I don't think you want that on your conscience. Please think reasonably about this.
I'm tall, so, sorry. That's good? Hello? Okay. As the co-executive of East Bay for Everyone, we voted overwhelmingly to oppose the previous RV ban and any future one. A ban that early in the morning is harmful. It's a prohibition on sleeping, and it's frankly unethical. The marina was an ideal place to be. I understand that the reason why they were evicted was because of the State Lands Commission. We need to reach out to Buffy Wicks and Nancy Skinner and have them reform that rule. That was an ideal place to be, and it's unfortunate they were kicked out. And frankly, I think we should take a sanctuary-city-style legal opposition and not be so keen on evicting them so quickly. But I want to talk about this morally for a minute. I live in District Five, and one day, I was walking outside, and someone dumped urine outside my place. And it turned out to be someone who lived in a car. And I actually, instead of being mad, I got to know that person and learned about an entire community of people living in their cars around my block. I can say, over the ten years that I've been living there, I've grown to appreciate them a lot more than I've appreciated the million-dollar homeowners who live around the area. Thank you. So, my problem with a sudden proposal like this is that it really doesn't leave any time for digestion, and that's, I think, really not good. You know, there's people with children enrolled in BUSD schools who may not understand what's being voted on here tonight. And for that reason, I'm very much inclined to support what council members Robinson and Davila and Harrison are proposing instead. But realistically, I think that there's a sanitation crisis that we need to address. We have a critical lack of public bathrooms throughout Berkeley. I've been complaining about this for a long time. I know I've talked to the mayor about this. I have Bartlet about this. This is a really big deal. And so, I think that rather than criminalizing homes, we need to address actually putting bathrooms all the way in Berkeley from north to south. Finally, finally, when we talk about Berkleyans and RVs, I just want to say that we often use terms like "they." We need to use terms like "us." Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Can I get a couple of minutes from some people? Yeah, thanks. First of all, I want to say, I really apologize to the city council for how you've been treated in this public meeting, because this is a public meeting for democratic input, and I really respect you, Mayor Aragon, for handling this and managing this well, because this is about hearing all voices. And I'm here to really represent not just myself, but at least fifty to sixty businesses in West Berkeley and people who live there, and...
Please, let's not interrupt the speaker.
I have, I've CC'd many of you on the email list. These are working people. These are businesses where people have working jobs, and they really care about their community. And the neighborhoods have dramatically changed over the last few years, both with encampments and RV parking. And no one wants to be punitive. We want to have a solution that allows for a transition. We care about what goes on, but we have to have rules. There's rules for everyone in this city. I mean, governing this with a policy of a fourteen-day permit, people having to move, I mean, that, most of these people came here in their vehicles, and they're registered somewhere else, and they decided to be here, and they purchased them. So, they, they are consciously making choices...
Please, let's not interrupt the speaker.
And we do have problems with waste, human waste, garbage and trash, and we, we need to resolve this, because it's really impacting our businesses. I support what you're moving forward with, and I really believe you have to have the courage to pass this. It really represents a vast majority of people in Berkeley. We care about others...
Please, ladies and gentlemen.
But we don't want to be intimidated into humiliating, fearful, you know, running from people because they're yelling and screaming at us what they want, what they want. No one's against these people. We're not against human beings. We care about people. So, thank you so much. I really hope you'll do a great thing for the city and for us, and transition this. We really care about this. It's a big issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, let's not interrupt the speakers. Let people have the opportunity to speak. You're interrupting the speaker.
Hello?
Let's be respectful of the speaker.
I primarily came here to talk about Missing Middle, but since you aren't going to get to that at a reasonable time, all I'll say about this is that I don't think it's a good idea to take away places for people to sleep at a time when most people are probably going to be sleeping. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Cameron Wu. I am a longtime resident and homeowner in West Berkeley. On any given night, we have three to five RVs, vans, or converted buses parked on our street. I urge the city council to change the status quo we're mired in, and to do nothing is unacceptable. I'm deeply disappointed in the mayor and the council members whom, having watched this problem grow out of, out of hand over the course of many months or even years, has offered us this solution to criminalize people living in vehicles and thus pit West Berkeley businesses and residents against RV dwellers. Your action or inaction has fostered a situation that portrays RV dwellers broadly as trash-generating layabouts, gaming the kindness of our city versus West Berkeley residents and homeowners like myself painted as a bunch of cold-hearted, selfish, capitalist nimby's. The truth falls somewhere in between, and I ask you for some smart, reasonable, human, humane solutions. Thank you.
Jeff Lomax. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for doing what you guys do. I really don't envy your job this evening, but thank you for being here, because it's a tough one. So, I don't envy your job this evening, but thank you for doing what you're doing, because it's tough. The one thing that resonates with me is this idea of, you know, out of the box. I think that really spoke to me this evening. I, when I hear residents and folks who've lived here a long time saying that they can, they've been able to work with this community to build a better community, I think somehow the proposal that comes out should accommodate that activity. At the same time, there are people who are being impacted. There are businesses that are being impacted, and they also have to have a voice and the ability to be able to, maybe it is, okay, not here, and there's a supportive community over there. So, thank you again for doing what you're doing, because this is one of the toughest ones you're going to face, and I wish you Godspeed in this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to need two minutes. Can I get two? Okay. Okay. The proposed modifications to the MUNICode, although purportedly specific enough to avoid an illegal challenge based on vagueness, clearly leave room for traveling businesspeople who pass through town in their Sprinter vans to be cited for eating lunch in their front seats. But that won't happen, because their money matters. Just like BMC 144120 hasn't been enforced in anyone's recent memory against any of the heavy-duty commercial vehicles that it was originally written about in 1952, these amendments just affirm what many of us vehicle dwellers have already learned, the hard way. BMC 144120 is being used as yet another tool of the gentrification that is running so rampant in this and other nearby cities. Our money isn't good enough for you to accept, not even when we want to give you the city money to allow us to remain in this place that we call home, but you will happily squeeze it from us by issuing citations that we can ill afford to pay. In a report for the city council on November fifteenth, 2016, Mayor Aragon said, quote, "Campers and housecars are temporary first-step housing solutions intended above all to provide shelter and stability. These dwellings prevent most of the health and safety hazards of homelessness, providing immediate relief so that their residents can transition to a long-term recovery." Mayor Aragon also stated that, quote, "A camper or housecar is an extremely efficient emergency housing option. These dwellings can be implemented immediately after purchase, and their mobility makes them ideal for interim housing." All of those facts are still true, only now, there are many more unsheltered Berkeley residents, and the mayor is clearly more interested in disposing of the unsightly RV homeless than he is in sheltering them. He then stated that, quote, "Currently, Section 1276020 prohibits habitation in residential vehicles for more than three consecutive nights in ninety days. Not only is this law difficult and time-consuming to enforce, it outlaws a very affordable interim housing option," end quote. If Berkeley is genuine about solving the shelter crisis, then they will listen to the mayor's words from 2016 and work with Berkeley residents who shelter themselves in housecars and RVs instead of supporting this hypocritical, counterproductive, and cruel new RV ban. There are families with children, students, disabled individuals, retirees, working poor, and people from all other walks of life who, like any other person, need to stretch their legs out at the end of the day. They should not be limited to only stretching their legs by reclining their seats or stepping out of their vehicles. Also, it should be noted that according to Cal Government Code 8698.4, during the shelter crisis, provisions of any housing, health, habitability, planning, and zoning, or safety standards, procedures, or laws shall be suspended for homeless shelters. During the shelter crisis, the local and state law requirements for homeless shelters to be consistent with the local land use plans, including the general plan, shall be suspended. And also, SEQA, quote, "Shall not apply to actions taken by a city to lease, convey, or encumber land owned by a city, or to facilitate the lease, conveyance, or encumbrance of land owned by the local government for, or to provide financial assistance to a homeless shelter constructed or allowed by this section." All of that means that the only thing stopping the city of Berkeley from allowing people who shelter themselves in vehicles to park in any of the copious amounts of unused and underutilized parking in the Berkeley Marina, or any other empty city-owned space, are the unwillingness of the mayor, council, and city manager to allow it, and a lack of genuine desire on the parts of the mayor, city manager, and municipal council to actually solve the shelter crisis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sir, please, sir, please sit down. Please, don't disrupt the meeting. No, I did not. Can we let this man speak, please? Sir?
Don't interrupt him. Let him speak.
Okay.
Hi, man. Name is Chanel and...
Say how you feel.
And I live in a RV and I live in Berkeley.
And you would what? Tell them what you would like to do.
I would like to stay here.
They're giving me 20, they're giving me a few minutes of their speaking. I met Chanel and beautiful siblings and the father in Marina, in the Marina. And I took pictures that day. You could not tell that it was an RV park. It was very neat. It was very organized. Amber was there and I was very happy and proud of the city of Berkeley. Then I heard that they had to leave and I heard that they were promised that the city manager would find a temporary place for them. Now I'm gonna begin my minute. Now I found out that they are being, uh, not allowed to live someplace. They are orderly. They've already proven themselves. I like them. They are neat. They're responsible. And please give them a chance. And they are not just the faces you see tonight. They're like my neighbors. They are other people that ask me questions and say, "What's happening? Why are they going to be told to go away in the middle of the night? You want these children to have to get up and move?" They are Berkeley residents. They go to Berkeley schools. And they have a very nice father. They've been very well-mannered. And I stand by God's grace that I'm a witness that these people are wonderful and they know how to take care of their homes. And they are taking care of their homes. Please find a place and I can give you several parking lots where they should be allowed to live with responsibilities like everybody has. They've proven themselves. And we can say more. And we are your face. And it's not just these people. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing before I get too heartfelt and start tearing up in front of everybody. Two weeks, it's not enough time. Three months, it's not enough time. The best, the best place for my kid to get an education is right here in Berkeley. I moved from Vallejo in a house to come out here in an RV for my kids to have a better education. And if you take that away from them, you got a whole nother problem with me. And I mean that with my life. No threats, no nothing like that. I'm not a harmful, no, nothing like that. I just, you cannot take me and my family away from these RVs in Berkeley, period. I would literally die before you do so.
I was angry, but now I'm just like crushingly sad listening to Chanel and getting the full sense of what you are doing. It's just unconscionable. It is just unconscionable. It is just unconscionable. It's an eviction. You're evicting homeless. It's an anti-homeless. It's an anti-Chanel measure. And you have no reason to do it now. You shouldn't do it now. You give us something, you know, some new proposal that nobody can read because you don't have enough copies? That's not a process. If people are shouting out, it's because we don't feel respected. You ask for respect. That's not respectful of us. We're not respected. This proposal is a pig. It's a real pig. And all the stuff about permit process is lipstick on a pig. And don't do it. Just don't do it. There's no reason to vote now. You have no reason to vote now. You have time. Get a real thing. Think about a real way for people to be here, finding the space for them. There's no reason to do this. You can't do it now. You shouldn't do it now for Chanel and for all those other people. Don't do it. I know you listen here with a long, I've been here so many times, long lines of people and then it's as if they were never here because the voices that got listened to when this proposal was put together was the voices that are not in the room, the voices of the property owners and so on. They don't have to come to this meeting. But we come. So, show us this time that you listen. Don't vote. Postpone the vote. No vote. No vote now. No vote to evict.
I heard some actual real fears tonight. I mean, people came up here and said that, you know, sometimes people living in RVs or otherwise homeless break into cars, assault people or, you know, defecate where they're not supposed to or make a mess. But I don't know if you guys know this, sometimes houses do all of those things. But we tend to deal with that on an individual basis. Meaning if, you know, somebody's defecating where they're not supposed to, maybe you should make sure they have the physical ability to defecate in a proper spot. Somebody's making a big mess, make sure they have some kind of trash removal. And as far as actual crime goes, again, deal with that on an individual basis. Otherwise, by your own logic, all of you guys and most of the people here gotta get out. That's all.
Thank you. So, this, I want to announce, after this gentleman in the black shirt, black and orange shirt, after him, we're gonna take a captioner break because we've been going for three hours. And we'll come back and we'll complete public comment. So, Mr. Finicombe, you'll be the first speaker after the captioner break.
Hi, my name's Zach. I live in West Berkeley. I work full-time in West Berkeley. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I wanted to bring up another point, which is something that's important to me and I think something that's really important to the city of Berkeley is a low footprint, a low carbon footprint. Living in my vehicle, I use 7.9 the amount of resources as the average homeowner in Berkeley uses. And something, I just wanted to bring that up, but something that's really concerning to me is that I think it's your guys' duty to represent the majority opinion here in the residents of Berkeley. And this is supposedly showing people who care about this issue on both sides, but I think it's pretty clear that there's majority opinion and I feel like there's further discussion that needs to happen in order to get that. I think part of that discussion is recognizing that we don't understand the needs of the city of Berkeley. I live and work in 4th and 5th Street and I've never met this man and I would really like to talk to you about this in person. There's one time... Did I get a minute?
Yeah, you can have a minute.
Oh, you're gonna speak?
No.
Okay. There's one experience that I've had in Berkeley where I was told that my presence was something other than positive. And that was Sven Handbags on 4th Street. I'm not, I haven't met the owner in person, but they left me a note on my dashboard that said, "Hey, RV owner, you've been here for two days and I have a feeling you might be affecting my business and I would hope that you could move." I will never park there ever again. Oh my God, I did not realize you felt that way. And learning about this new ordinance or this new proposal has shocked me because I feel like I did not understand that people felt this way. And what's confusing to me is I still feel that way. Seeing everyone here, where are all these people? I have heard from four or five of them and I appreciate that and I want to find them and talk to them more. But I want to hear from all these other people that are supposedly what you're representing, which is majority Berkeley residents. And I'm not, I'm just not hearing it. So, if you could point me in that direction, I'd appreciate that.
Well, I am a student at Willard Middle School and I walk out to the garden a lot and I try to pick up some nice tomatoes, but I look out in the street and I see this big RV. And I'm sitting there. I'm just like, what could be in there? I feel kind of scared. I like to walk home a lot, from my house to my house. But sometimes I feel too scared. I just want to call my parents for them to pick me up so I don't have to be near them. But I get it. I should be in all of your shoes. I just feel, I really feel scared with, I see RVs with closed windows, no one ever showing their faces. I just want to wonder, what could be in there? Stuff that could be against me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, there is an RV in front of my school. And it's been there for months. Like my brother said, there's an RV in front of my school. And it would always be there, maybe moving a couple yards every couple days. There could be magnificent, very kind, nice people who are just trying to make their own way. But there could also be bad people. We don't know. I never got to walk home in elementary school, but now I do. And the freedom of it is just amazing. But now with that RV, just chilling like it owns the place or something, it's just scary.